All right, I'll call to order the town of Mod Deser Plan and Board Meeting for January 26, 2022. Welcome, everybody aboard here. We've got a hybrid meeting in session. We've got myself and Tracy Loftus Keller in person here in meeting hall as well as some members of the public in Athens. And then we've got other board members online through Zoom. We've got Meredith Randolph, Kristi Anastasia.
The Vice Chair.
The new Vice Chair.
You know, I'm so excited to be able to someday hold that hammer. That's all I can think about.
It is. It's such a pleasure. And with that, Kristy, why don't we just give the quick Zoom spiel anyhow, even though Kyle's here running it for us?
No, that's fine. And I was trying to mute myself to open up my seltzer. So it was giant sound. And then I realized it looked like I was probably drinking a beer. Okay, you are on Zoom. You are being recorded. And if you could keep yourself on mute to keep various sounds and presumably private conversations out of the rest of the room, that would be great. Helps us listen to folks who are speaking. And if you can navigate to the chat, if you can find that on whatever interface you're using and enter your name and or your name, and if you have an affiliation, add your affiliation. And that'll help us know who's attending the meeting and it helps Heidi do the minutes. And the other thing too, is if we can use the chat for signing in, but not for side conversations, that would be great. If you have something to say, just bring it into the full meeting so that we can all talk about it. You can be recognized by the chair, et cetera. And eight, nine, 10, we have like 10 people. So I think we can have 490 more people in this meeting.
Wonderful. Thank you. All right. So moving on, item two on the agenda tonight, we've got approval of minutes. We've got the minutes from the 19th. Again, thanks a million to Heidi for pulling the minutes together and anybody has any comments, thoughts, motions in mind about approving minutes? Feel free.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes of January 19.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. All right. Dave, we, Dave was not at the 19th. Thank you, Heidi. Yeah. Sorry, Dave. We missed you. So let's keep the train rolling down the tracks here. So item three on the agenda tonight, we have a conditional use approval application. We have conditional use approval application, the first one of the year. Oh, oh, one, 2022. Owner name is Howard Johnson. Agent is Dennis Pakel. Location is 20 Rockland Road, Northeast Harbor, tax map 24 lot 45. The zone is Village Residential One. Purpose is section 6B6, fences and walls exceeding CEO authority. And we had a site inspection at 3:30 today. And we have a new secretary as well. So Tracy, was this one advertised in the Butters? Do we notify?
Yes, it was advertised in the Mount St. Islander on Thursday, January 13, 2022. And Butters were notified. Their notice is dated January 14, 2022. And I assume these were sent out by regular mail.
Great, thank you. All right, I'll report on the site visit. It was, it was the sole attendee there along with Dennis and the owner and it's, it's, I mean, it's pretty straightforward relative to the plan submitted and what Dennis was explaining is that there's really three sections of fence. And on his plan, you know, there's the longer section of fence on the west side of the property line. Back to the back pin. And then there's the, it kind of comes up towards, towards the road and it, and it takes a hard left over to the house. And there's a short section there with a gate on it. You can see in the elevation submitted, the gate's kind of centered on the fence section. There's a kind of a post and header element that comes up above it. And then over by the garage, there's another smaller section of fence facing the road. The fence is held off of the property line. There's not a structural side, non-structural side to it. It's the same construction, both sides of the fence. The fence is held, Dennis explained, about six inches off of the property line. And then the, kind of the back L of the property is, is going to be fenced in with a deer fencing, which we don't really review because it's, it's a very, it's a more open than closed fence type. And that was about it. And with that, Dennis, I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Okay, thank you. So the variance is only because it is above six feet. If it was under six feet, everything is to code. It's seven feet because of deer. And for the fence, and then it is over seven feet only because where the two posts come up in the gate, I have a header going across. It is not, in neither spots where the gate is, is it even close to the neighbors or even seen by the neighbors? And obviously you have to be able to walk underneath a header, which is why it's up a little bit. As Bill said, the fence is a custom post and beam kind of fence, very high end. There's no back and front. It's beautiful on both sides. And we did talk to both neighbors. We talked to the neighbor that abuts us on the long fence. And they're actually going to put in some fences similar around the rest of their property. They're probably gonna put some money towards this fence because they like it. And then we talked to the director of of Margaret Yonceneer's house. Plissee Bousance or something like that. And she just wondered what was going on because she was shown the plans or sent the plans. And we explained that the fence would be on the other side and we just spoke with her and she was very happy about it. So I don't think there's any issues with the neighbors. And that's really all I have. I think it's very simple. I've had probably 10 fences that I've gotten variances over time. So I'd be glad to ask, answer any questions.
All right, well, I'll open it up to the public if there's any questions for Dennis about the fence. Or the project in general. For the snow forecast for Saturday.
Changing all the time.
All right, going once, twice. Right, I'll close public comments and we'll move on here. So I would first ask for any motion from the board. Well, let me first ask if there's any conflict of interest on the board with this application.
No.
None heard. Second, I'll ask if there's perhaps a motion to find the application complete.
I'll make a motion on the application complete.
Tracy Keller, I'll second that.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Hanley, aye. Any suggestions perhaps to maybe use the short form checklist?
Anastasia, I make a motion that we use the short form.
Tracy Keller, I'll second the motion to use a short form.
All those in favor, Kristi?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy. Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Hanley, aye. And then anybody care to make a motion to approve the application? And I only sigh because this seems like such a roundabout way to do this. And I've got to talk to Noel about that. But um,
Meredith Randolph, I make a motion to approve the application.
Anastasia, second.
All right, then we press the pause button and then we go through the review of the application. So here we go.
Motion to press the pause button.
Yeah, I, one of these days, it's, I'm gonna find myself just jumping right to approval. But haven't done that.
Yeah, let's just do that.
All right, so I've got the short form checklist in front of me as well as the application. And where this is a conditional use application, we're going through 6A, B, and C. I would wager that 6C is not going to be applicable because it's not in the shoreline zone as is most of 6B. But let's start with 6A. And under 6A, we're looking at general performance standards. And under general performance standards, we're first, item we're reviewing is 6A1 compatibility. There, we're talking about the physical size, the visual impact, the proximity to other structures, the density of development. And applicant, you know, refers us to the plan submitted. And I would say C application. 6A2 erosion and sedimentation control. Yeah, that's, so the application is talking about that there's stainless steel pipes, three quarter inch pipe inside the posts that are actually go into the ground and there's no real disturbance of soil. And I would say C application. And that the wood, the wood posts, Dennis, slide over those metal posts.
That's right. We just use a compactor to stick the poles in. We drill up into the post and they go on the top. So there's no, there's not even a footer dug, you know, there's zero disturbance of soil.
Okay. 6A3 highway safety applicant says NA. 6A4 impact on town services. NA. 6A5 land suitability, they say C attached, so C application. 6A6 lighting is NA. There's no lighting proposed, Dennis?
We might do lighting at some point, but at this point of the project, there is not, and there wouldn't be on the fence anyways. There might be some path lighting to the front of the building, but it's not part of this at all. And they haven't requested lighting yet.
So NA. 6A7 stormwater. Applicant says NA. 6A8 vegetation. NA, you're not impacting any vegetation, Dennis?
No, there's no trees or anything we're taking down to put this in.
Got it. 6A9 dust fumes, vapors, odors, and gases. See, NA. So the findings of fact are as presented by the applicant in the attached application. And that the conclusion allows that the proposed use is in compliance with all standards of section 6A.
Randolph, I so move.
I should say for which the standard has been met. But Meredith moved.
Tracy Keller, I'll second.
All right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. So moving on to section 6B, specific performance standards for activities and land uses. And here all of 6B is NA except for 6B8 fences and walls. So C application. Checking off. You're not proposing any air landing sites, Dennis?
Not yet.
Right. And then going to 6B8 fences and walls. Applicant says applicable standard met. Of course, contention upon approvable approval from the planning board. Yeah, so C application. Then the findings of fact are that the proposed use will include none of specific activities or land uses described in section 6B except for section 6B8. And that the conclusion laws that section 6B is not applicable except for section 6B8 for which the standard has been met.
Randolph, I so move.
Tracy Keller, second.
Right, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Since we are in the VR zone, the Village Residential One zone, section 6C is not applicable. So the findings of fact are NA that the proposed lot is entirely outside of the shoreline zone and the conclusion law section 6C is not applicable. And we still have to vote on that.
Randolph, I so move.
Anastasia, aye.
Oh, we'll give it to Kristi. All those, all those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Hanley, and because it's not in the shoreline zone, one more vote. 59 does not apply.
Randolph, I so move.
Tracy Keller, second.
All those in favor, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
So William Hanley, are there any permit conditions to this one? I don't think so. I didn't receive anything from Kim. So no permit conditions. And then so we'll circle back to our tape player and press play on the approval vote. And so all those in favor of approving the application, Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Kristi.
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy.
Tracy Keller, aye.
Dave.
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. Congratulations, Dennis.
Thank you. We'll try and make the village more beautiful.
Please.
All right, be well. Thank you.
That goes in. And when you guys can, please come sign. All right. Seems like we've been reading a lot of these lately, but bear with me again, please, as we read through item four on the agenda tonight. And this is a continuation from December 8. So what it says on the agenda is that the land use zoning ordinance in section 6B11 lots and access that no lot may be built upon or otherwise developed unless it has a private road or driveway for access to a public way by a valid right of way benefiting the lot or a combination of driveway and or one of more private roads or by ownership of land abutting the public way. And then it says that if more than two lots are accessed from the same private road, then it must meet the street design and construction standards of section 5.14, the subdivision ordinance. If no more than two lots are accessed by the same private road or driveway, then it must meet either the said street and design construction standards or the driveway construction standards of section 6B6 of land use ordinance. A pre-existing primary access drive that serves up to two existing lots need not meet the requirements of section 6B6. All lots must maintain safe access for police, fire, police, and emergency vehicles as determined by the fire chief. And then it goes on to say that the subdivision ordinance, section 6, waiver and modifications of this ordinance, and that's section 6.1.1. Where the board finds that the private road providing access to a lot or lots cannot meet the street design and construction standards of section 5.14 because A, the application of land use restrictions would prevent the work required to bring the existing road into compliance. Or B, the physical conditions of the site render strict compliance impossible, then the board may waive such standards. However, in all such cases, the board must find, and this is where we will have to have motions on each, each of these items. A, that the proposed plan brings the road into compliance as much as is feasible. B, the proposed plan will provide safe access to and from the property. And C, the proposed plan will allow for access to the site for emergency vehicles. And tonight, we have property owners, Robert Lamar Hardy Jr., applicant is Aldo Adriatzola. And agent is Margaret Jeffrey. Property location is off Harborside Road, Northeast Harbor. Tax map 26 lot 25-002, zone is residential one. And the purpose is to request a waiver of the street design construction standards of section 5.14, the subdivision ordinance for an existing private road. And that was a mouthful. And I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Adriatzola then. Or Margaret or whoever wants to take it on the applicant's side from here.
Margaret will, will lead.
I'm, I'm Margaret Jeffrey. And I am agent for Aldo Adriatzola. And we are, Mr. Adriatzola is under contract to purchase property from Robert Hardy, who owns the property still. So we are here continuing from the hearing, the meeting on December 8 and requesting a variance from the street standards set forth in 5.4, 5.14 of the subdivision, of the subdivision ordinance. Primarily, first off, because the existing physical conditions do not allow compliance with the street standards, the right of way leading to the Hardy lot or lot 25-2. It is 20 feet wide rather than their required 50 foot wide right of way. We had initially hoped that we would be granted 50 foot wide right of way to provide the Butters, but none of the Butters wanted to widen the right of way. So we are here asking you for a variance from those standards. The applicant has been working with Tim Brochu, engineer Tim Brochu, and fire chief, the fire chief Bender to come up with a plan that works for the town that complies with that provides safe passage that allows emergency vehicles to come onto the property. And that is as compliant as is feasible. So.
Shall we show anything on the screen now?
Yeah.
Yeah, please.
He is having some issues getting kicked off, so it might come and go.
We will do our best here.
So initially, Beth Enger Britson, who is also here, met with the fire chief to discuss and had an email exchange with fire chief to discuss what would be, what would work as far as he was concerned. And he raised four issues that we've addressed. He said that one of the issues is to clean up the entrance onto the roadway. You see that that the entrance onto the roadway is, there's a proposal to, to clean that up. And there's this visual here that you can see, but there's also one that they provided. It's in the packet that we sent. Yeah, yeah. If you can see the area that's outlined in red. That is where the proposal is to widen. You can see that they're, that they prefer not to remove the stone wall. And in fact, when coming from either direction, there are there currently is already a residence whose primary, primary access is this road. So large vehicles such as fuel delivery presumably traverses this road regularly. The home is, I assume, you know, there periodically are heavy vehicles that have to go up this road.
For the record, Margaret, can you describe what's happening, what's going to be proposed to happen in those areas?
And correct me if I'm wrong, Aldo. And so the idea is the roadway on the left where you see the outline in red, actually, if I'm, if I understand, actually goes all the way over to the rock wall. So that would be cleared up of the debris so that there would be no impediment for a heavy, excuse me, emergency vehicles. The roadway, to the right of the roadway would be, I think, widened with gravel, hard-packed gravel, so that it would both accommodate large vehicles and also be permeable to for storm drainage purposes. And really, the applicant is very, is concerned and sensitive to both of those issues. And I think once you get beyond the area of concern here that we see where the rift is, then it's a straight shot. The second issue that, the second concern that the chief of, the fire chief stated was that the roadway had to be 12 feet wide with, you know, rectilinear tube of 14 and a half by 14 and a half. And that definitely will be, or it actually is, I think, in most, in most places along this road, that there is already compliance with that. And certainly it will be trimmed up. It is a 20 foot wide right of way. So the applicant has the the authority to do that, the right to do, to, to to make that possible. Now, the two other factors that the fire chief asked for was for widening at the curves. So Mr. Adriatzola proposes So Mr. Adriatzola proposes widening at these two curves, making, probably making hard-packed gravel at these two curves to widen and make passage in those locations feasible for large emergency vehicles. And then the fourth change is the hammerhead that you see to the left. This is, this hammerhead is on the Hardy lot or lot twenty-five two. It has been shown, both of these schematics have been shown to the fire chief, and he responded saying thumbs up, basically, that these look, that changes in accordance with these plans will be satisfactory to him. So I think that that brings us, that those addressed the issues that have been brought before us.
Would you like to add anything to Margaret's presentation?
The only thing that I wanted to add to Margaret's presentation is consistent with what we told you last time, the goal is to try to be very respectful of the neighbors' desire to keep everything in the same aesthetic that it is right now. So we're trying to do whatever we can to accommodate the fire chief, but not minimize disruption to any of the neighbors, because they want to preserve the rural charm of the area, as do we.
Got it. All right, well, open it up to public comment. Anybody want to say anything? Now's your chance, board included. And I've got a member in the public here with his hand up, and.
I don't know if you want to start with Zoom or start with me.
Yeah, can we, can we stop the screen share for a sec then, please? Just make sure that the owl is tracking and project, because we've been getting complaints. Sometimes the owl doesn't pick up some of the, some of the quieter public members.
Yeah. I'm attorney Justin Bennett. I'm here for Mr. Whitman. I've also spoken with Mr. Nitsa, who's joining us by Zoom, and will want to say a few things a bit later. But essentially, I'm the attorney for Mr. Whitman.
Okay.
Just to clarify, at the last meeting, there's a question about the right of way that's shown on the nineteen seventy-six survey plan. Now, the survey plan is page three of the application. So there's like a four-page application document you have. That survey plan's on page three. There's still a question about whether it exists or not. To me, if it's shown on a nineteen seventy-six survey plan, it probably wasn't released in nineteen fifty-two. There's that conflict between was it released in the mid nineteen fifties and why is it shown on the seventy-six survey plan? Having just looked at the presentation, I see that that right of way is now shown as a continuation through the subject plan. However, I think it's only shown as twelve feet wide and not twenty feet wide. This is the first time I've seen that plan tonight. I'm just looking at it. I'm not sure if it's the full twenty feet wide or just twelve feet wide.
Margaret?
And a comment, and actually, maybe I should defer to Mr. Broshu, who I think that you drew the basics of that plan. It's, well, I'll begin by saying, there, there is a nineteen fifty-two release of the right of way from the lot eight twenty-eight dash two, the lot that's north of this parcel. And we did the title search to show the chain of title for the two parcels from nineteen fifty-two until the present to see if that relinquished, I have that title search here, to see if that relinquished right of way was ever reestablished, and it was not. It was not. What you see on the schematic that was up there is actually what's on the lay of land, the land, which is, you know, basically a clearing area that is twelve feet wide. It's not a road, but if whoever was there for the site visit might have seen that it is a cleared area. That does not mean that there is an easement going up over that. And in fact, there is not an easement going up over. We have the release here from nineteen fifty-two, and then we have the title search, these two parcels, the chain of title going down from nineteen fifty-two until the present, and that right of way was never reestablished. So there is no right of way.
And Mr. Nitsa and Ms. Tilney, I'd see your hands are up, but I'm going to ask the applicant to screen share the plan we're referring to here, just so we can put the question in context.
May I add one more? You'll see at the top of the schematic that has the hammerhead.
Yeah, we're talking.
Hard to read it, but it's right where the cursor is right now, actually. Like, if you can circle that little, oh, yes. No, if you can make it larger even, right under where it says William Nitsa, it says right of way relinquished in deed book seven four seven, page three, something.
Three, six, one.
Three, six, one. Like I said, that was never reestablished after it was relinquished.
The issue I'm raising, though, is the applicant's own application has a copy of a nineteen seventy-six survey plan that shows a twenty-foot right of way still going through. The second point I wanted to make, I've got a copy of the trail maps for Northeast Harbor, and that number twelve, the Harborside Trail, is a trail that carries on going, historic trail carries on going straight up through that land, I assume following the twenty-foot wide right of way. I've got copies to provide as documents if you're willing to accept copies of.
Yeah, we can't accept submissions on the night of the hearing.
Can I just say something real quick in response to that? Because I did mention this during our last meeting on the, on the eighth of December, that, you know, this was a concern raised by the suites at our site visit, that they wanted the guests of the Harborside Inn to still have access to the trail. We have no problem with that. We are fine with people having, you know, walking access to the trail system of Northeast Harbor. No issue there whatsoever.
Who generated this plan? Was that?
That's Mr. Broshu, who's on the, on the bridge.
He generated the base of the plan, which we altered, some of, to clarify some information, overlay being proposed on top of what is existing.
I mean, could we get Tim to, sorry, it's not Tim, Mr. Broshu, to chime in on just the question from Mr. Bennett about the width of the right of way being indicated on this Did I state that concern correctly?
Sure, sure. Can you hear me okay?
I can hear you, and I'm just asking Mr. Bennett a question, if, did I state that concern correctly?
The seventy-six survey plan shows there's still a twenty-foot right of way going through. There's also a historic right of way. And what research has been done into the width of the historic right of way?
So your concern is the correlation between this plan and the seventy-six survey plan?
That, as well as, there's no reference on here about the historic right of way that goes up that hill, the Harborside Plan.
Okay.
My sense is it needs a new survey plan rather than relying on cut-up copies of the seventy-six.
This is a brand-new survey.
Is that a?
It's completed in just this month.
But it seems to be based on the seventy-six survey plan as a base.
Mr. Broshu, can you speak to that concern?
Sure, yeah. This is a brand-new plan, a brand-new survey that we just completed about a month ago. When we do a survey of a piece of property, we rely on a wide variety of information associated with the property, including researching deeds back as far as we feel we need to go to establish the boundaries. This plan reflects all of the information we found in relationship to the property, and we show the right of way because it is included in some of the deeds, and we also show the note, we showed that note on our boundary survey plan, which we stamped, that it was relinquished by that book and page number.
Mr. Bennett? The question I had was, on that map, it seems to show the right of way as it goes across the septic system or the proposed septic system, there's a measurement twelve feet. So as depicted on that plan, it seems just to be twelve feet wide and not twenty feet wide. It may go back to the bigger issue.
I guess, I guess I'm not sure what plan you're referring to, but our research indicated that it was a twenty-foot right of way that extended through the property that was relinquished by that deed book and page number.
Okay, I'm, I'm looking at the nineteen seventy-six survey plan that the applicant used as part of the application. That, that's the plan I'm working from. I, I don't see a survey stamp, but it may be a new survey plan. It's clearly a plan. I'm not sure, the copy that's been shown on the screen.
Are you, are you being graphic, are you graphically questioning the twelve-foot dimension mark relative to the twenty-foot notation?
That's one of the issues I'm questioning, yeah.
Tim, do you see that?
It's over by the septic system or that area.
Yes.
Right, right there. So you've got a twelve-foot dimension there, but then there's the, the text above it.
I, I think that.
How can the, how can the twelve?
That would be wider than the twenty-foot.
Is that twelve feet something? Yeah, I guess, is that twelve, I think that twelve feet notation is on the hammerhead that you drew.
Correct.
That's right.
And the, the law is there, understand correctly, are showing the actual traveled way, which is not the actual twenty-foot right of way, which is, so it's depicting what is on the ground, not the full twenty-foot right of way. That's why you have the discrepancy of dimension.
I'm going to ask our, our planning board member, Meredith Randolph. Meredith, does this make sense to you graphically?
I just look at the fif, as well, the setback that says it's fifteen feet. There's, that's what fifteen feet is, so that does look like it's about twenty feet or twelve feet, rather. You know, I'd say that that right of way looks twelve feet.
The.
I guess.
Likely, what we showed there was what was visible, visible improvements if there's a trail up through there. I wasn't personally on the property when we did the survey, so I could find out from them, they may be just representing the roadway, edge of roadway as they found it, and did not depict the exact twenty feet. They called it the gravel access road, and it sits within a twenty-foot right of way.
Yeah, just, just to.
So if you want the limits of the right of way, you would take the center of the road and go out ten feet on either side.
Sorry for cutting you off there, Tim, but I just wanted to echo what you were saying. If you are on the site and you look at the, the path that is there, it is approximately twelve feet wide.
Yeah.
So.
Right, so that's what they showed when they physically located it in the field.
Tim, I'm not trying to get hung up on this, but just if, you know, this could, this is all part of the record here, but why, why isn't the right of way shown graphically wider than the twelve-foot hammerhead if it's twenty feet? Because the reason I ask.
Well, we noted it on the plan.
But don't you think graphically, don't you think graphically you should show that? Because, you know, relative to one of the specific requirements of Bender was the widening of the, of the, those three turn areas coming up, and if you don't have the right of way actual width graphically conveyed, you know, it's, it's kind of, it just doesn't solidify the modifications to the driveway coming up. You know, you don't have a clear reference between where it is relative to what it is.
May I interject?
Yeah, sure.
Basically, the, the right of way, as it's included in the deed description, says a twenty-foot right of way following the road. That's why we showed the road, because right of way follows the road. If the road changes, the right of way can shift.
And can I just ask, I'm not.
If we.
Yes.
I'm confused as to why we're getting so hung up on, we've, we've got a note saying that this is, we're talking about a relinquished right of way.
That's not agreed, that's not agreed, though.
Yeah.
Can I interject, please?
Yeah, go for it, Margaret.
We are talking about access to the Hardy lot. And so the, we're not, this is not an application for Nitsa, for access to the Nitsa lot. This is an application to the Hardy lot so that the owner of the Hardy lot can get a permit to build a house.
Yeah.
That is what we are, that is what is before the planning board today.
Yeah.
Whether that is shared with other people, we know that the right of way is shared with other people as we go south to Harborside Road. We contend strongly, we are, we have much conviction that that right of way does not continue through Hardy, the Hardy lot. However, it is not an issue. That is not an issue. The issue is access to the Hardy lot. Okay? And we have complied with, well, we, we proposed something that the chief of police agrees with, that, excuse me?
Fire chief.
Fire chief. And something that will work, something that is a very good plan that will work for this neighborhood and for the safety of this road.
Thank you. And can you turn the screen share off? And I gotta just.
At the last meeting.
But hold on a second. I want to, I want to, Anne and Paul have had their hand up for quite a while, and Anne, you're on. You gotta unmute.
Can you hear me?
We can hear you.
Okay, great. I am concerned about a couple of things. Now that I'm not looking at the map, it's, one of the, one of the things that I also would like to know about is walking up the trail. The trail, it goes dead center where the diagram for a house is going to be and where the septic will be. So I'm not quite sure how you do the trail, and I'm not quite sure how you keep this road fifteen feet away, which I believe you have to do, from a property line, is that correct? So I know, I, I believe that as that road goes up, it's going to be less than fifteen feet away from Mr. Whitman's property. And as I am just downhill from this project, potential project, I am really concerned about the septic system. I understand that the septic system is, is kind of a quirky, and that's maybe not the right word, but it's a, it's a system which has to pump up somehow, and then, and I don't really understand the science behind it, but I, or the physics, but I believe that it's got some risks to it. And the other concern that I mentioned in the last meeting was that there is a lot of water in that area with natural springs or little, little rivulets that are going through, little brooks that are going through that area. So those are a few of, of the things that do concern me, and I'm, I'm not sure if they've been, if they've been responded to. So those are a few of, of the things that do concern me and I'm, I'm not sure if they've been, if they've been responded to. That's it for now. Thank you.
Margaret, would you like to respond to that?
Mr. Handley, I suppose that I would leave it to your discretion as to whether that, the issues that have been raised by. Mrs. Till, Tillney are within the jurisdiction of what we're addressing today, which is access to the Hardy lot. Um. There, there are, uh, Mr. Saint Amant is here today to. Address septic issues if, if in fact you think that that is within the jurisdiction of what the planning board. Is looking at today, which is access to the Hardy lot. But, but I'm gonna say that Mr. Ed Rosella is. Happy to share that information because the information about the septic system, because he wants. This to be a project that works for the neighborhood. And he is, he is, um, he, he wants this to be a project that works for Anne Tillney and. Mr. Whitman and the suites and others and, and Mr. N- NHTSA.
Right. So again, just to remind the board, you know, we're, we're considering if the proposed, our, our jurisdiction on, on the road waivers is within the context that the proposed plan brings. The road into compliance as much as feasible, the proposed plan will provide safe access and the proposed plan will allow for access. To the site for emergency vehicles. I mean, relative to the complexities of. Septic system impact or design, I mean, I, that's really not our purview. However, one, one of the components of the. You know, that the fire chief came back with is the hammerhead turnaround and, you know, maintaining safe access for emergency vehicles. And if I'm not mistaken, that, um, that the hammerhead and the, and the septic system does have some relationship. So I, I think there is, Margaret, a, a thread of connectivity there to it. But I mean, you've, you've also got your Roger here to speak to that and why don't we just hear from him and then Mr. NHTSA will come, will come to you. What's up with the septic, Roger?
So, uh, Roger Saint Amant, I'm a licensed site evaluator. The applicant asked me to attend the meeting. Uh, we had done some preliminary soil tests for the current owner, Mr. Hardy. Uh, this summer. So we had done several preliminary soil tests out there with a backhoe. Because it was quite, quite ledgy and rocky and we did find that there was a suitable area for an onsite waste water disposal. We haven't designed anything out there. We haven't seen a house plan. I haven't really seen anything beyond that, but. I will say that based on what we saw, there's a suitable site. And from what I saw on the plan that, that Margaret had up, I don't believe that the hammerhead. Looked like it was affecting the, the location of the septic system from what I saw. I'm happy to take any questions on that if the chair so chooses.
Uh, we haven't heard from Mr. NHTSA yet, so, uh, Mr. NHTSA, you're on.
Good evening. Let me just turn my video on here. Can you hear me?
We can.
Great. Um, I'm Paul NHTSA. I'm the co-owner of the two point oh six acre lot that's due north of. The Hardy land. Um, the, uh, plan that was shared with the board, uh. A little while ago, labels it as William NHTSA, but, uh, title transferred to, I owned half of it from purchase and. Uh, my father's half interest transferred to my wife, I believe in twenty seventeen. I'm just here to express my concerns about the proposal. And, and largely echo some of the comments of Mr. Bennett and, um, and Tony. Um, I understand the nature of the application. Um, you know, the board certainly probably already has this in mind as context. We're talking here about a. Lot that's just shy of a half acre in R one zoning. And obviously, you know, this, this lot is grandfathered with respect to residential development, which I fully understand. Nonetheless, we're, we're talking about a lot that's less than half the size of, um. The standard zoning in the area. Um, and as has already been discussed, this is very. Uh, ledgy, uh, land, as is the land that surrounds it with, um, you know, very, very thin. Soils. Um, I echo Mr. Bennett with respect to, you know, disputing the. The applicant's position on the right of way. I would also note for the board that the plan that was shared tonight, which may have been in the possession of the board. Um, for tonight, that's certainly the first time I believe that I'm seeing it. And I believe also the first time that, you know, Mr. Whitman, Ms. Tony or Mr. Bennett are seeing it. And, uh, not only does it show the. Right of way, which is claimed to be relinquished, also shows a different, um. A proposed location for the dwelling and has other, you know, further modifications. Um. And so, um. You know, I, to the extent that it is a new survey, this is, uh, this is new information. My request to the board is, you know, and let me also just say by way of background that. Um, I'd hope to attend, uh, to obtain representation for tonight's meeting. It's. Been very hard to get a land use attorney on the island these days, but, um. Um, you know, were the board to continue this further, I would certainly, I think, be able to obtain representation and also, um. Provide, uh, you know, my own position subsequent to a, a title search, um, with respect to the, um, with respect to the right of way. I'm happy to answer any questions, uh, from the board.
None heard, but Anne, you've got your hand up again, I see.
Um, yes, I'm sorry. I, um. I just wanted to also just mention that there was discussion about widening the road, uh, going up. Passed on my property and I just wanted to understand how that works.
Why don't we?
So there's two, couple of questions that I have, that I haven't heard anything about when, and when, um, Roger mentioned, or Mr. Saint Amant said, uh, something about the septic. He didn't respond at all to the water, which I'm concerned about that's local, localized. And I know that that's not what we're really talking about. We're really talking about the road and the access. I get that, but I just, I, I would, I, I've asked that question twice and I haven't heard any responses to that. So I'm just curious.
The, what, why don't, why don't we screen share again and show where the sections of road are being improved and? Per, Tim or, or whoever authored those. Areas of improvement, why don't we talk about that a little bit more and Anne, if you have any specific questions about those areas? Please chime in.
Okay, I'll do that.
My goal was the one who, who created, uh, the, the areas that you see that are showing the widening based upon the turning radii that were provided to us by the fire chief. And so, um. The goal there is merely to, within the twenty foot right of way, where the road is, is insufficient. To put in gravel to, uh, make the turning radius such that, uh, a fire vehicle can get up there safely.
So, so you're essentially gonna have the paved travel way and additional stabilized. Compacted gravel shoulders.
That's correct.
Potent, you know, with the intent to widen the travel way within those radius areas.
Precisely.
I would love to respond to that. First of all, there's, there's only pavement up as far as my property and then it changes to gravel for those who don't, who don't know that. So there is no, and as far as I'm concerned, I had never had any intention of, of creating a paved road up, further up along my property.
So that, that, so she's correct. The, the suites have pavement, uh, up to the, the end of theirs and then when it reaches Ms. Tillney's land, it's, it's just, it's gravel. So the goal is to gravel to fill in those areas where the turning radius is insufficient.
Anne, do you have any objections to the widening of that area on your property? I mean.
Well, it's, it's worked just fine for us and I, I, I. Would prefer to keep it as it is. It's, yes.
I'm with her, but, you know, the fire chief. Need wider, so I, I really have no choice.
He would work to the satisfaction of the fire chief if he wants to, you know, have a test run up the access road and.
The roadway.
The road is, the road is maintained by, by Ben, Ben, uh, of Ben Moore and. And, uh, he's done a, as far as I'm concerned, a, a, a bang up job. So, and, and he's, he's kept it running very well. There's, there is a, another water issue that's right at the top of where my property stops and goes into the Hardy land. And we have created, um, you know, um, ways for the water to. Go be, be funneled into a, a drain on the side of the driveway to the left. At that junction, often for whatever reason, when I come back up in the spring or the summer, someone's thrown a bunch of stones in it and has. Created a, a situation where the water then goes down the driveway and, and changes, um. The, the way the, the, the flow of the water, which should naturally be. Pushed into the very large ditch that goes along the side of the, of that driveway. I'm just, I'm not seeking to change that driveway in any way I, in, in any way at all, if I don't have to and, uh. Anyway, that's, um. That's it, I guess, unless you've got other questions for me.
Yep. Um, Margaret's got her hand up here, Anne, so I'm gonna, uh, turn it over to Margaret.
Okay.
Well, this roadway has been. Has provided primary access to Ms. Tillney's property for over a hundred years, if.
Yes.
The, it's, the historic. And it has provided safe passage. For all that time for Ms. Tillney. Now, by widening it slightly as required by the fire chief. I don't think that we'll lack safe passage, which is one of the requirements. As I mentioned before. Heavy vehicles do undoubtedly periodically come onto this roadway and make their passage as the primary access to Ms. Tillney's property.
Yes, but. It's true. My house, my house though is a, is a summer house only. It's a, it's a cottage which, which is only. Uh, accessed in the, in the, from, you know, June through mid September, oct- early October. Uh, we, we have town water and our town water gets shut off on October fifteenth because it goes over ground. And so, you know, it's only used during good weather most of the time, unless it's very bad, unless we've had a lot of, of rain and, and it's wet. But the road is, is a good, solid road.
The. Could we turn the screen share off again? Thanks. Just, I, I gotta see everybody. All right. Tim, do you have any further comments about the road, the road design, the gravel? The gravel shoulders, the widening of it?
I guess my only comment would be, uh, you know, what they're proposing is exactly what we do in many applications is. Just simply widen the road in certain areas to get the emergency vehicles in and out. It just provides a stable base. A lot of the times these shoulders, you know, become vegetated and things like that, but they're still very stable and they could run off onto. And it will keep the character of the road. Uh, as it is now, which I understand is very important to everybody. So. I guess that would be my, my only comment. It's very typical of how we widen roads in these type of situations.
Thank you.
Oh, can I ask a question just to poke at this hornets next?
Always, Meredith.
Um. On that survey of where the hammerhead is in gray. Is it not a concern to anybody that, uh, the lower left corner of it crosses? It doesn't seem to stay where, am I misunderstanding that? It doesn't look like it stays in the right of way. It crosses over just over a bit of a corner of the Whitman land. And it's probably, you know, I presume it often is that roads kind of wander. Uh, over time or something. Can you put the, um, survey back up?
It's, it's my understanding that that does reflect the actual location of the roadway and, um. Because of all sorts of factors, we think that it would be best if the roadway remains where it is right now. It could be moved. But again, I don't think that that is a matter of. For the planning board's determination. But it could be moved toward Ms. Ms. Tillney's house. And there's room for that to happen.
As Mr. Whitman's representation, uh, do, do you have any comment on that, Mr. Bennett?
I've only seen this plan twenty minutes ago on a screen, so I'm trying to catch up massively. I wish it was shared before this meeting with the neighbors.
Yeah, so that's, um.
I, I don't have an answer to your question, Roger.
So procedurally, that's an issue because we've got, you know, a couple of questions about a developed plan. The plan's dated the twentieth of this month and it. Uh, it's not in the town, the town package and it sounds like just, um. There hasn't been sufficient review of it yet. So if, Margaret.
Did we not send it to you on the twentieth?
I've not seen it.
Yeah, Margaret, it's not in the town packet here.
Uh, and, and I've not seen it. And where you were just drawing that little red, um, U. Uh, that is also where there's major, um, a ditch there and there's, if you do create, if you were to create a road there, you'd have to put a bridge of some sort.
It's not in the public record yet.
Oh, that's, that's, I'm sorry about that. There was a whole packet that we sent.
Yeah.
To you and to Ms. Keen.
Yeah, can I, can I ask the other planning board members if they got that?
I, I didn't.
Tracy hasn't received it.
I, we sent it only to you and to Ms. Keen and to.
Yeah.
Kyle. Yep.
Okay.
Knowing that.
No.
Kim Keen was not gonna be here today.
Meredith, you haven't, you have, you didn't get a package from Kim?
I have not. And as to the comment that they, it seems to me that we have, um, dealt with this issue where right of ways wandered. Over time and it didn't stay within the right of way or the property lines or whatever. And we didn't just let it go. It did have to, as part of the review, it had to be resolved, whether it was put back into. I mean, I just, I don't see that you can just have it wander on to somebody else's property and say, well, I just did that. Whatever.
And it, Meredith, I would think based upon our past waiver request reviews. And if it does wander over, we need the consent of the, 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 the landowner to do so. And where the, so just again, it, just a technicality here where the. Plan was submitted, you know, it's dated the twentieth, we, we haven't received it yet and the, and it's not in the public record. I feel like the, like just the due diligence needs to be done and that the, you know, the interested parties need to have access to the plan and, um. And not trying to be difficult, but I'm feeling we've got another continuation here on the, on the table.
Bill, I was also wondering if we could, um, there's a whole bunch of issues here that aren't within the relevance. Bill, I was also wondering if we could, um, there's a whole bunch of issues here that aren't within the relevance to the right of way. And I was wondering if we could help the people out with those concerns by directing them to what venues are the appropriate places to express all these concerns? Cause I appreciate the groundwater and, and septic and all that stuff, but we just aren't the people to do anything about it. And who is it that we send them to?
Absolutely, Meredith. And that, you know, we're, we're hearing concerns about those kinds of things. And I think that those would have to be directed kind of independently to the, to professionals dealing with those kinds of concerns where, you know, the applicant has Roger here tonight, a licensed, uh, soil evaluator. We've got Tim Broschu, an engineer, um, from C, um. Tim, what's the new company?
Haley Ward.
Haley Ward. And, uh, you know, I think those kind of.
Haley Ward, yeah.
Sorry, the, those would be the avenues to raise those kinds of concerns about. And Mr. Bennett, you've got your hand up.
Yes. At the last meeting, you said that those concerns were a hundred percent relevant to how you were going to reach a decision around this. So I was, I was coming here tonight expecting, I wasn't expecting that to be revisited. At the last meeting, you said that the use of the land, the location of the septic, the land quality, those issues were relevant to how you would deal with this issue. You said you wanted to look at the wider context
Yes.
of how the land would be used. So perhaps this is for another day, but I, I was expecting that to be relevant to my, if we've gone further.
So if we, so in the past, I mean, you know, with road waiver requests, I mean, there, there is a broad spectrum of review there. We commonly draw back to the three criteria we've got to find motions on. Obviously, you know, if we've got, and what I try to thread the discussion into is that we've got a component of compliance dictated by the fire chief that's maybe relative or adjacent to a, a, a potential septic area. You know, if, if, if that is an issue or not, you know, that's, that's sometimes difficult for, for a board to determine. But we've got, you know, other professionals here to help, uh, help guide us on that kind of thing. But we got, with this one, we got a lot going on here. You know, you've got, you know, you've got a, you know, I think we've, we've touched upon the whole, you know, um, legal issue with the right of way. We've got modifications of a road entrance onto a, uh, you know, Harbor Side, which is, um, uh, technically a state highway. We've got modifications of the road radii. We've got, um, you know, um, a very small lot with a very large required hammerhead turnaround for public safety compliance. And we've got a plan here that's obviously just not unfortunately part of the public record yet. So I, I, I think the, the, the biggest concern here for the board is really just to, you know, have the, have the appropriate time to, you know, you know, review this and make sure the public has access to it with it being in the public record. So I'm gonna be quiet for a second and let any board members chime in if they care to. Dave?
I, I would like to see the, have a survey show where the actual location of the twenty foot right, wide right of way is, leading to the property, not, not necessarily where that twenty foot wide right of way or the other right of way may be on that piece of property, but the, the actual, show the right of way and not just the travel way.
Kristy, any thoughts?
Uh, yeah, I mean, I agree with you. I think it needs to be a part of the public record. So folks can really kind of analyze it and think about it from the different perspectives. Uh, you know, we see a lot of things come through here and obviously this one has, you know, the interest and the participation from, you know, neighbors, abutters and things like that. So it, it's gonna require a little bit more paperwork and planning to continue this discussion.
Meredith?
Um, I guess I, in terms of, uh, I guess, am I correct in, in thinking, Bill? In the discussion of all the other things and why the septic keeps on coming up is that because of the lot is so small and there are limited options for its location, we are only talking about the hammerhead and the access to the lot. But we need to see, see that the other aspects that are required in such a small lot are feasible. And that we're not saying, well, we'll just put a hammerhead over the whole lot. Can't do anything else, but we'll worry about that later. But, uh, and that's why you were saying, is that why you were saying that you were considering that? Just to say that you put, that that hammerhead in reality with the other things can function. We're really only interested in whether the hammerhead can function.
Of, of course, Meredith. I mean, this is a pretty unique waiver request. We're, you know, based upon the size of the lot and you got a lot of stuff stitched into a pretty small canvas here. And, uh, you know, I, I think, I think it is a bit more relative than it typically is with our waiver requests. I mean, we.
Well, I just wanted to clarify because I felt like, um, some people, like, you know, that the audience or the applicants were getting confused as to why we were still visiting issues that really aren't about the access. And it isn't about the access, but if they propose a plan that doesn't, in reality, work with what needs to be on this tiny little lot, then that is relevant.
So thank you for finding those words for me.
Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure that, um, that we have the authority to consider those items. I, I think that, I think our assignment is very clear. My feeling is if the hammerhead, um, can be shown, the whole hammerhead being shown on that property, or if the hammerhead's off the property, what right does it have to be off the property? That's why I'd like to see the center line of the, of the right of way. If, if the right of way is actually on the adjoining, joiner and that they have a legal right to be there, then that, that, that can be there, I would think. But I, I, while we don't have any criteria on area of the lot and all of that, I, I just don't see where that's our, where, where we should be doing that.
I hear you. Mr. Nitsa, you've got your hand up again?
Oh, yeah. I don't want to take too much more time from the board. I just wanted to, um, just note that to the extent that this is continued for further consideration of the board, um, the proposed dwelling site on the plan that was previously submitted with the application has shifted versus the survey or the plan that was shared this evening. And so certainly, you know, I just, I guess, speak for myself in saying that I would be interested to know what the actual sort of proposed, uh, dwelling site is. It's, it seems to have moved potentially in connection with either the hammerhead or the existing, um, gravel road there. But I couldn't quite tell why there had been a shift in the proposed location, um, of the dwelling. And so I just note that. And then I'll also just share with the board that my understanding had been, and this is based on my, uh, conversation with Erica Mitchell, that there had been a soil test done for standard septic, um, and that the, the soil test had failed to perk as to a standard system. I'm not a soils engineer, apart from it, but, um, I just note that and therefore I believe that it would have to be a compact, um, septic system as, as installed.
So what I'm, what I'm kind of gathering from the board is a consensus and about the, you know, we've got a continuation here. Uh, Dave's asking for the center line of the right of way, Dave?
Well, either the center line or the actual boundaries of the twenty foot right of ways. Just somehow have a survey show where, where the right of way is.
So where, where the boundaries are and that the, essentially to clean up the application, to pull the hammerhead solely on to the, the, the lot. Not, essentially don't have.
Not, not necessarily. If they have, um, if the right of way is, um, if they have a legal right to be on the Whitman property, then that would be fine.
So we, so that, that needs to be evidenced on the plan then?
By a surveyor. If a surveyor shows the twenty foot wide right of way, then, then we know where their rights are.
Okay. You know, and, and just, um, again, one, one kind of submittal comment. And as we want applicants to have as strong of an application before us as possible and make as informed decision as possible. You gotta be really careful about taking a licensed professional's drawings and modifying it and then submitting it. So we need to know, you know, who authored that. And so if a survey is submitted, I would encourage you to submit the, the survey unmodified. And if there are modifications or planning or schematics or something relative to that, then you gotta really clarify who made those and, and what they are. Cause you can't, you gotta be careful about, um, can, can combining the two kind of languages into a, into a, a stamped document like that.
Certainly. This, so the submittal was not stamped. I did, um, you know, clarify that it was modified based on the survey information from Haley Ward, Haley Ward. But understand, uh, the, uh, the concerns there.
Thank you. And so, so I, I think too, Dave, we should get the, then the, the stamped survey as well.
Definitely. I mean, this, this, all this is, is a conceptual plan. It, it doesn't, I don't, I don't even see, I may be wrong, but I don't even say anything on here that says who prepared it.
So we, we get a stamp, a stamped survey plan. We get the boundaries of the twenty foot right of way indicated. And we continue to the next available hearing and what that is, is we've got, the next hearing is on February ninth, but it's fully, fully dedicated to the quarry that night. So then the next hearing after that is two weeks later.
May I, may I just go back a little bit to the twenty foot wide right of way and, and the definition of the twenty foot right of way?
Sure.
The way that it reads in the deed is together with a right of way in common with others over a twenty foot right of way from the above described premises to Harbor Side Road. So what, what we have is the historic road. And the fact that it is a historic road. And that has to be the definition. So, I mean, it, it has to be.
Dave, what do you think about that? You've got a lot of experience in that.
Well, um, I, I couldn't hear everything that she was saying, but, um.
Let, Margaret will repeat it for you.
Okay, this is the language as it appears in the deed. It says, together with a right of way in common with others over a twenty foot right of way from the above described premises to Harbor Side Road. So my point is that that right of way has to be where the roadway is. That defines it. That defines where this historic road defines where the twenty five, twenty foot wide right of way is.
Yeah. No, I, I fully understand that. Um, what I was asking for is if a surveyor, um, can, can prob, with, but I don't know, I'm, I'm not a surveyor. I've, I've had some experience in that area, but, um, I, I would think a surveyor would go there, establish the center line and put, um, show the twenty foot wide road as a center line. But I don't know. If, if, if they can't do that, then I think we should know that.
It seems as though that.
Speak to that if.
Let's let the surveyor, the engineer speak to that.
Yeah, cause I'm also a registered landsurier as well. And why we showed just the travel way was because of the language that was just, uh, brought up. We can show on our plan where that twenty foot right of way is relative to the center line of the roadway as it exists. But if we put it on the plan, we would also have to note that that's where it is now, but it could move. Because the language is so vague and there's no meets and bounds, um, all the lot owners could say, hey, we want to move the road over here. But we, we could show where it is. And you are correct in that if any of the improvements beyond that stay within the twenty foot right of way, they certainly have the right to do that.
Yeah. And my, my question was, is there, um, would a surveyor be willing to say that the center line of the road is the center line of the legal right of way? And if not, that, that we just need to know that. I think you're, that's what you're saying.
No, no, we could. We, we could do that. And we, but we would also caveat it in that that's where it is at the date of the survey, uh, and that it's not a definitive, uh, right of way that, because it could move if the landowners wanted to move it.
Yeah, I would think they'd all have to agree, but I don't know that.
Yeah, yeah, it could. Yeah.
One person, I mean, without any other evidence, the travel way usually establishes the center line of a right. So unless somebody comes up with some other evidence, um, that's where it is and that's where it will be forever.
Right. Where, where this is a historic road, it establishes the location, according to Mr. Broschu. It establishes the location of that twenty foot wide right of way.
I disagree. You have the nineteen seventy six survey plan. That survey plan showed where that road went forty years ago, plus forty plus years ago. It would help if Mr. Broschu's survey could track where the nineteen seventy six version of the right of way is compared to the current. There is historic evidence of where that right of way was in nineteen seventy six. It's on the applicant's own filed application.
Tim, why are you shaking your head?
Oh, sorry. I didn't mean to do that. Well, legally, as speaking as, as a surveyor, there's language in that deed that says, that was just, uh, you know, uh, dictated to everybody that it's together with a twenty foot right of way. The evidence of that right of way at the date of our survey is where the road is now. If it was in a different location in nineteen seventy, it doesn't really matter. It's where it is now at the date of our survey. And that's why I made the point where it could change again because there's no meets and bounds description of the actual right of way. It is evident by where the road is at the date of the survey.
Okay.
I kind of disagree, but I think that's off track.
But Dave, you were gonna say something?
Yeah, I, I, what, what I'm asking for is an, an opinion of a surveyor. And.
And I can certainly provide you with my opinion. Yes.
Right.
Absolutely.
Let's, and let's just take it from there. Uh, you know, let, let's, let's give the surveyor's opinion on the plan. And if, if there's a, if there has to be some other notes, fine, but let's just get, let's get a survey.
Absolutely, absolutely. I can provide you with a stamped drawing with that on it.
Have we not gotten the surveyor's opinion here during this hearing?
I, I think we need it, we need it recorded on a stamped plan. Any, so when I was mentioning the continuation dates, uh, is, is everybody understand that, you know, we would continue it to the next regular hearing. But again, we've got the quarry wrap up on the ninth, the entire hearing. And the next hearing is two weeks after that, Heidi. So it's the twenty third.
You go?
Yeah. Meredith?
Uh, I also just, I wanted to clean up what we're going to talk about again, because I think Dave did have a good point. You know, we're, I was talking about, you were saying, we need, we can discuss the other things relevant to make sure that it's realistic. things relevant to make sure that it's realistic. And Dave sort of said, that's not, that it isn't even really relevant, relevant to what, and I, I actually think that he's right too, even if we put a hammerhead in the middle of where, the only place where septic go, sort of beyond our, they, they can put this, the hammerhead in there, but if they couldn't put a septic, they've got a, another problem that they're gonna run into with Kim Keane. So I guess I do, I do think that he has a point of just saying, we, we should just be discussing access right of way, not, they can put the building where they want, you know, as long as it meets code. It doesn't matter that it moves where the proposed building site is, moves on, that's up to them, that's not really our business.
I, I would agree, Meredith. I mean, it's, this one's a tough one because of just the size of the lot, you know, it, I feel like some of it's stitched together. But then again, it's, it's not our purview. So I would expect us not to take too deep of a dive into the septic issue. You know, I, I think the, the resolvement of the, the, the hammerhead and cleaning up its, its, um, where it lies on the land, you know, would be the, the bulk of our focus on that. And it, but, you know, with this being a public hearing, we're still allowing public comment. And as we've all learned from the quarry, you know, just letting, letting concerns be voiced and then it's the board's, you know, duty to really determine which is, you know, where we go from there. So I think what we probably need to have tonight is a motion relative to the continuation to the date certain and what we're asking for the applicant to come back with.
Yeah, I, I would like just a comment that I, um, I don't mind hearing people's concerns. I think it's all, you know, all good. Um, but we just, when it comes time to make a decision, we have to stick, stick to what the criteria is for us to be able to make a decision.
And, and again, right, Dave, I mean, all the waiver requests come down to, um, motions and findings on the three criteria of review for the waiver requests. So if anyone, anyone want to try to kind of congeal that into a, into a motion? Feel free. I mean, we've got some, again, just to summarize, I think we're asking the applicant to come back with a stamped, uh, survey, uh, in the kit, with the surveyor's opinion upon the boundaries of the 20-foot right of way. Uh, we've got, uh, the hearing continued to a date certain of February 23rd.
Just, just a question, if I may. So we're asking for the survey with the 20-foot right of way as one document separately from that document, uh, the modifications we've already shown with the, the hammerhead. Okay, all right.
And, and any, any, so there's, there's, I guess there's essentially three things. So then we've got the, the legal document, the legal stamped survey. We've got the separate document of any proposed modifications, um, for compliance, uh, to, for the waiver request and then the, the date certain of continuance. If anybody wants to add anything to that, subtract, chime in.
There, I also inject it, Bill, that, that the last planning board meeting, the Lozo is planning on changing the code on this issue. I don't know if it would make this specific issue any easier, but as this is a difficult one, the applicant might also take a look at what that change is, see if they just want to wait until after town meeting.
That's a good point. There's been so many waiver, I'm sure you guys know that we've got a, a warrant language, um, a land use amendment language before the warrant committee that's been, um, approved by the planning board for a submittal to the town meeting, the special town meeting in March. And it's, and it specifically addresses road waiver requests and road standards and would encourage you guys, if you haven't, you know, read any of that, to read about it. Thanks for bringing that up, Meredith.
If I could ask a question, I just want to know if we do, you know, come back into, you know, this, uh, carried meeting, um, I just want to make sure we have enough information so that, you know, when you go through the checklist, you know, have any of the board members, you know, have any additional questions or things that they think, you know, might require more information as we go through that checklist as it pertains to this application?
Dave, any thoughts? I mean, I.
I thought I explained pretty well what I, what I would like to see.
I, I think you were pretty clear there, Dave. And I think the, the legal stamped document of the survey and the proposed changes should do it. And Tracy's nodding her head, yes. Meredith is?
I just think they, they need to make it clear that, I mean, I think they've shown what they want to do for roadway and just they, it needs to be clear that they legally can do it. The little cut over the Whitman's property is that, does that fall under that it is a 20-foot right of way, shared right of way, and therefore the fact that it walked over to the Whitman's property, does that fall? But it's not actually, is it, that's still right of way or is that their private driveway that's crossing?
And. Part of the right of way.
Okay.
So I, and Christie was shaking her head, yes. So it sounds like we're, we're all on the same page on the requested submittals for the 23rd. Anybody want to turn that into a motion?
Um, I can start. Um, I'll make a motion.
Can I just, may I interject one thing really quickly? And that is that you, you were asking about the, the possibility that the right of way has moved. I don't think it actually has moved. I think it just was, that property had always been owned by the same family that the Whitman property is on. So I think it was, I think it was just a, a, it went right through a, you know, piece of property that was always kind of conjoined with that other piece of property. I don't, I don't think it's moved. If you look at the way the drainage for, for water coming down that hill is, is set, I don't think that, that the, uh, anyway, that's just a, sorry, I don't mean to interrupt your, your voting, but that's just, I, I just don't think it's moved.
All right. Christie, back to your motion.
I'm on mute, I know. Um, I'd like to make a motion that, um, this application noted as IV, continued from December 8th, 2021, um, is continued to a date certain, not being February 23rd, 2022. And that, um, when the applicant comes back, uh, we have a legal stamped survey, uh, showing the boundaries of the 20-foot right of way and/or the center line of that 20-foot right of way. And, uh, which includes a surveyor's opinion. And, uh, we have an additional document showing the proposed modifications, um, so that the board can, um, analyze and consider the waiver request.
And Christie, can I add to just where we had the, just the technicality of the submittal date is that, um, Heidi, correct me if I'm mistaken, but submittals are typically two weeks prior to the actual.
Typically 14 days.
14 days. So if you guys are comfortable with that, you're gonna have to submit that 14 days prior to the 23rd.
We'll submit what we submitted already.
Yeah.
Augmented by, hopefully Mr. Broshu will be able to, um, complete his surveying and we'll be able to add that to it and submit it the full two weeks in advance.
So I don't, do I need to add to the motion that the, the submittal is 14 days in advance? Or is that just, that's just the way we do business?
I, I mean, that's the way we do business. That's just the, the standard procedure.
So I think it's a good parenthetical note to the applicant, but I don't, I, I don't feel like it needs to be the third part of the motion. If anyone, if anybody else does, I'm more than happy to tack it on.
I'm, I'm not sure, I, I can't remember your words, but, uh, asking for the surveyor's opinion, um, that may or may not be necessary.
Okay, so legal stamped survey.
Showing the right of way. And then if the surveyor feels that he needs to add a note to the survey or further, um, qualify what he's put on the plan, then that's fine.
Okay.
The, the boundaries of the 20-foot right of way, should we be specific, Dave?
Right. I'd like to see the boundaries of it. It'd be, I mean, you can do the center line, but we'll all be grabbing scale rules, trying to figure out where it goes, so.
Yeah, I had said, um, either the center line of the right of way and/or the boundaries of the 20-foot right of way. So I mean, I'm not a surveyor, I don't know, you know, if they can't get the boundaries, then the center line's better than nothing. Preferably the boundaries.
They're, they're one in the same. If the, if they show the center line, they're showing, they're showing the boundaries, it's just whether it's on the plan or not.
True. Okay, so I strike the center line piece from the, uh, motion, uh, boundaries of the 20-foot right of way. Do you want me to say that again? Or Heidi, do you have it enough to say it again?
Why don't I read it? Uh, so you moved to continue the meeting to February 23rd, 2022, and that the applicant will submit a legal stamped survey showing the boundaries of the 20-foot right of way and an additional document showing proposed modifications. And we need a second.
Oh, Tracy, I'll second.
Okay, all those in favor? Christie?
Anastasia, aye.
Tracy?
Tracy Keller, aye.
Meredith?
Randolph, aye.
Dave?
Dave Ashmore, aye.
Myself, William Hanley, aye. All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, on the, what do we have left?
Other.
Other? Is there any other other?
Uh, I, well, actually, this is just a note, but it looks like there's a bunch of people who haven't signed in through the chat. We just have a couple of people there. So if you forgot to do that and you can do that, that would be great.
Did you get the kind of, uh, chair or board protocol yet from Ken? Okay.
Not to my knowledge, um, no, I went to the mailbox today, I didn't sit.
Okay.
I mean, if it's at the office, you know, or something, I can pick it up when I go in to sign on the other thing we did today.
Got it. Anything else, guys?
Email.
We can adjourn, so we're just saying goodbye.
All right. Well, well, we continued that, right? But, but we actually adjourned the hearing.
Oh, I thought we, we.
Done it both ways.
We've done it both ways.
We're not continuing the whole meeting, we're just continuing a part of it, right?
But I think that has to, I think that's the whole meeting. I, I don't think you can adjourn the meeting.
Yeah, I think we just continue it.
Okay. Do we, anybody think we should have a, a motion, a second motion? And, well, we just did, we just continued it, so. All right.
I'll second the continuation, how's that?
I'll second stopping the recording and ending the evening.
Yes, thank you.
Bye-bye, guys, thanks.
Goodnight.
Goodnight.